Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm School Committee Chair Jerry Robinson. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll ask my colleagues to unmute and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Because this is a remote meeting, I will ask Ms. Sullivan to please call the roll.
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Alkins?
Present.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Present.
Ms. LoPera? Ms. Colanco Garcia? Mr. Tran?
Present.
Mr. O'Neil? I believe he'll be joining us shortly. Ms. Robinson?
Present.
Thank you, Chair. We do have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Tonight's session is being shared live on Zoom. It will be rebroadcast on the Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, under the August 10th meeting link. The meeting documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they're finalized. The committee is pleased to be offering live simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cabo Verdeano, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. After the interpreter has finished introducing themselves and providing Zoom instructions, we will activate the interpretation icon, the globe at the bottom of your screen. Click the icon to select your language preference. Will our Spanish interpreters please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in that panel?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. Distinguished guests, Madam Superintendent, welcome school committee members. My name is Juan Bernal. I am one of the simultaneous Spanish interpreters whom, along with interpreter Mr. Randal Dominguez, will provide simultaneous interpretation tonight. I will now proceed to explain how to access the interpretation feature in Spanish. Muy buenas noches para todos. Bienvenidos. Mi nombre es Juan Bernal. Vamos a ofrecer interpretación simultánea. Vamos a alternar con mi colega, con mi colega, Mr. Randal Dominguez, cada 30 minutos para proveer el servicio de interpretación. Para accesar el servicio de la interpretación, busquen el globo terráqueo que aparece en la parte super inferior de sus pantallas y hagan un clic sobre el globo para poder seleccionar español como su idioma de preferencia. Si se están conectando de un iPhone, de un iPad o de una tableta, busquen los tres puntos en la parte superior de su pantalla y seleccione español como su idioma de su preferencia. Muchas gracias. Thank you very much. Go ahead, Madam Chair. Back to you.
Thank you. Will our Haitian Creole interpreters please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Haitian Creole?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joseph Tiller, Haitian Creole interpreter. C'est un plaisir nous gagner pour nous avoir aujourd'hui. Moi-même, Anna Dej, n'a pas su ré- interprétation pour tout le monde qui parle Creole. No mande vous participer et puis gon globe en bas écran là, web cap clics sur lui ou appartenir la conversation. Nous suite aux doses déjà. Bonne chance. Merci beaucoup. Thank you.
Thank you. Will the Cabo Verdeano interpreters please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Cabo Verdeano?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. My name is Josiane and Armando and I will be your Cape Verdean interpreters for tonight. Buah tarde. Mi nombre es Josiane y juntamente con Armando se vencer nos interpretes pues no tilly. Ven, nos tenés acceso a interpretación en Creole. Nos clicke aquí el icono de globo en la parte inferior de ecrán ahora que fica disponible. Si vos sotausa cualquier otro tipo de dispositivo, vos te calcana tres puntinho en la parte inferior, selecciona language y después vos te vaipacabo verdeano. Obrigada y buah tarde. Thank you.
Thank you. Will our Cantonese interpreters please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Cantonese?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. I'm Anna Terry and I will be a Cantonese interpreter for the meeting tonight. Diga, oha Anna. Gama Terry tomo chou wei hei. Wei da ga taigong tong singe kong dong waa fa ye. Yanga kida wo di koe ye sao. Ching li kong lai. Gaang kong dong waa zuai du kong dong waa ke fa ye pando. Yung ni hai yong so giwa, ma ba ni kong go. Saam go dim, 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 dim. Zaai gaang keng do. Zaai du kong dong waa zuai du kong dong waa ke fa ye pando. Ngai sa da ga, yanga kina. Bye bye. Thank you.
Thank you. Will our Mandarin interpreters please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Mandarin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. My name is Wei. I will be a Chinese Mandarin interpreter with my teammate Tina. Hey, da jiao hao. Wo shi ni de pu tong hua tong sheng fa yi wei. Gan xie ni jian jian jiao lu ah, zhe ge hui yi. If you need to translate, please click the bottom of the Earth儀旗 icon and select Chinese选项 to enter the translation channel. If you use your phone or tablet, please click three points and select more options to enter the translation channel. Okay, back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Will our Vietnamese interpreters please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Vietnamese?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Vi. You and I will be your Vietnamese interpreter for the meeting today. Inchaohu, gui vi. To ten la vi. Chi yin ve to sa la tong diet ven ku gui vi. Va boi to ngai hong nay. Xin gui vi nyin va mangan hen va tim thaik waa kou. Ki tim thaik waa kou thi bong baod da de tim tieng viet. Vietnamese de nghe deu tong diet ven di lai cho gui vi hiu. Kamon shak you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our American Sign Language interpreters are Kylie, Lina, and Hannah. Thank you all for assisting us this evening. And thank you to all of the BPS staff behind the scenes who also provide support for our virtual meetings to run smoothly. We will now activate the interpretation icon at the bottom of your screen. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you to everyone who signed up for public comment. Sign up for public comment closed today at 4:30 PM. Please make sure you are signed into Zoom under the same name you used to sign up for public comment. You can use the Zoom tools to rename yourself so that committee staff will be able to recognize you when it comes time to call on you. Thank you all for your cooperation. Tonight's meeting will be a little bit unusual. Due to illness and travel, we will not have a quorum for the entire duration of the meeting. In order to conduct the necessary business of the school committee this evening, I would like to propose that we move the votes to the beginning of the agenda. If and when members need to leave, we will have, we will vote to adjourn the meeting so as we will no longer have a quorum. Given the urgency of the work being done by the district and the upcoming DESI System Improvement Plan deadlines and the need to share this important information with our stakeholders and community members, remember, the remaining members will stay on to hear the acting superintendent's report and the update from the district on the systemic improvement plan, the first part of which is due on August 15. And we will maintain a livestream for the public to hear these important updates. Those signed up for public comment may also be heard this evening by the remaining members of the school committee or may choose to wait until our next regularly scheduled meeting. Our first action item is the approval of new membership in the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association, MIAA, for the following schools: Boston Arts Academy, Edward M. Kennedy Academy for Health Careers, McCormick BCLA 712, and BPS Alternative School Network. You'll recall the Deputy Superintendent of Operations, Sam DePina, and Athletics Director Avery Estel presented this recommendation to the committee at our July 13th meeting. I will now invite Dr. Eggleston to offer any final comments.
I'll just encourage the support of a school committee for this agenda item. This will ensure that all of our secondary schools across BPS have athletic opportunities and to be able to fully participate in MIAA. I think this is a good news story for schools and I hope that it will have the support of the school committee. Certainly, we are available to answer any questions the committee might have relative to this agenda item.
Thank you. I will now open it up to the committee for final questions and comments. Any questions? No. Okay. If there are no questions, we will take one vote on the slate of schools. I will entertain a motion to approve new membership in the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association, MIAA, for the following schools: Boston Arts Academy, Edward M. Kennedy Academy for Health Careers, McCormick BCLA 712, the BPS Alternative School Network, which includes Boston Adult Technical Academy, Boston Day and Evening Academy, Boston Collaborative High School, Community Academy, and Greater Eggleston High School. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins? Dr. Alkins, could you repeat that?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now. Thank you so much. Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. LoPera? Ms. Colanco Garcia? Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Our next action item this evening is an employment agreement between the Boston School Committee and incoming Superintendent Mary Skipper. You'll recall that on June 29th, the committee voted to appoint Mary Skipper as superintendent of the Boston Public Schools, subject to the successful negotiation of an employment contract. Tonight, I am pleased to bring before you a draft contract that is fair to both parties and positions our district for success. Before I review some of the terms of the contract, I'm delighted to welcome incoming Superintendent Mary Skipper, who is here with us tonight to say a few words. Superintendent Skipper, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Robinson. I'd like to thank the school committee first for giving me the opportunity to be the next superintendent of the Boston Public Schools. I feel incredibly honored to have the chance to lead a district that invested in me and shaped me as an educator and leader over several decades. Working with the committee, our mayor, our city officials, district and school-based staff in service of our students and families is truly a dream come true for me. We have 49,000 reasons to make the BPS a district that students are proud to attend and staff are proud to be a part of. And to that end, I want to build a vision with this committee to serve the whole child, one that provides each student with the support to thrive academically, socially, emotionally, and physically so that they have the access and opportunities that we would want for our own children. I want to collaborate with the committee to establish a mindset that serves all students. We must collectively ask ourselves critical questions to address systemic challenges and meet the moment for those who haven't been served well or had a voice, namely, our special education students, our Black and Brown students, and our English language learners. They depend on us and they deserve nothing less. I want to strategically plan and work with this committee to identify and remove the barriers that get in the way of our students' progress and progression. Our student zip code, the languages they speak or do not speak, the color of their skin, or whether they have an IEP or a 504 plan should not determine their future outcomes. And together, we can seize opportunities to make this our new reality in BPS. To do this work over the next months and years, we will build a diverse, experienced, and dedicated, talented team, one that's committed to putting our students first. I look forward to working with each of you, our mayor and city electeds, our staff, families, communities, and partners in this work. I'm excited for what's ahead and, but most of all, I'm honored to work in service of our students with you. They are our future. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Skipper. We're excited to get to work with you and you're now welcome to leave the meeting as we discuss the terms of your contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
I will now review some of the highlights of the contract. Superintendent Skipper will serve a four-year term beginning on September 26. Until then, she'll be working per diem while she winds down her work with Somerville Public Schools. Superintendent Skipper will be compensated $300,000 per year. This pay is consistent with similar recent city hires, including police commissioner and the fire commissioner. Superintendent Skipper will also receive a yearly contribution to her retirement annuity. The superintendent will receive annual performance reviews by the school committee with eligibility for a 2.5% pay increase next year. After that, the district will conduct a review of the market rate of similar-sized urban district superintendent salaries to ensure a competitive salary. The contract includes language that allows the parties to mutually agree to separate, which was not in previous superintendent contracts. The superintendent will have the option to utilize $10,000 for professional coaching if she wishes. Those are the major highlights of Superintendent Skipper's contract. Before we move on, I want to note that I have signed Acting Superintendent Drew Eggleston's contract as authorized by the school committee on June 29. Consistent with past practice for interim superintendent contracts, this agreement did not require a full school committee vote. I'd like to take a moment to briefly review the major highlights of Dr. Eggleston's contract. Dr. Eggleston is serving as acting superintendent until the effective date of the appointment of Superintendent Skipper, which we now know is September 26. He will be compensated the rate of $280,000 while acting superintendent and for the following four months while Superintendent Skipper transitions and organizes her leadership team. After his term as acting superintendent, Dr. Eggleston will remain with the district in a leadership role. I want to thank Dr. Eggleston for his willingness to provide our district with leadership and continuity at this critical moment. I will now open it up to the committee for questions and comments on Superintendent Skipper's employment contract. Are there any questions? Okay. If there's nothing further, I will entertain a motion. Oh, sorry.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, Mr. -
I just saw.
This is his hand up.
I just see it now. Sorry. Dr. Anna and Brandon.
No. Hernandez. I'm just acknowledging that I don't have a question mostly because so much of this has happened. The conversations have happened outside of this space and so I want to just be really clear about that. And then I, you know, this is more of a comment that I think the superintendent's contract is fair and it's equitable and it's aligned to other recent hires of the city and that feels like we're on the right track and doing the right thing to make sure that we can keep and retain great talent. So I feel really good. I feel really good about that. I just wanted to acknowledge it.
Thank you. If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, sorry.
May I also just say?
Yes.
I want to say to Mr. Cardad Hernandez, yes and, because I agree and appreciate that I'm with other contracts in the city. It is also, you had done the research on the average right now of other large cities and other salaries in Massachusetts for superintendents. And at this point, it is equal with that. But it is also, we are in a period where salaries for superintendents are rapidly increasing, most likely due to the difficulty of the work. And so that's why you had alluded to that. And I also appreciate that you added in the provision about, you know, the contingency for mutual agreement, which has not been in prior contracts as well. And thank you for pointing that out.
All right. Yes, Mr. -
Yeah. And thank you, Mr. O'Neil, for saying that as well. You know, one of the things we heard in previous conversations from the public was around this, this issue that we had been unable to really address in the past. And so I feel really also proud of us building that into this contract, knowing that we've now seen a few times that this language around mutually agreed upon sort of process of moving on has happened here. And we still had never been able to address it in a contract and I feel really proud that we're naming this as one of the options for superintendent to leave and then building in provisions according.
Yeah. Thank you. I hope we don't have to exercise that peace. Thank you. All right. If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to approve the employment in contract between Superintendent Mary Skipper and the Boston School Committee for the period commencing September 26, 2022 and ending June 30, 2026. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
He's having connection problems.
Okay, I will go back to him.
Okay.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
You dismuted yourself.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. LoPera? Ms. Colanco Garcia? Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
And let's try Dr. Alkins?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can. Thank you. Perfect.
Yes.
The motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. This contract will be shared publicly once it is signed by all parties. We look forward to officially welcoming Superintendent Skipper to BPS on September 26. Until then, the work continues under the steady leadership of Dr. Eggleston and his senior team. Our final action item this evening is grants for approval totaling $11,185,345. I will now open it up to the committee for questions and comments. Any questions? Okay, if there were no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the grants as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. LoPera? Ms. Colanco Garcia? Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The grant is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Now, as I stated earlier, we will adjourn tonight's official meeting since we will no longer have a quorum, but will still remain live for the public to see the important updates from the district on the superintendent's report and the systemic improvement plan. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A move. Or seconds.
Thank you. Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. LoPera? Ms. Colanco Garcia? Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to thank Mr. Cardad Hernandez and Mr. Alkins for joining us. Thank you and feel better. Talk to you later. Okay. We will now continue with the acting superintendent's report. I present to you our acting superintendent Drew Eggleston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I begin with this report, I want to acknowledge that over the past month, we have lost several of our BPS students. We are heartbroken and continue to stand with those who are in mourning. We remember the ways in which they have brought light and laughter into our school communities. And as a result of this, we have provided mental health support services to students, families, and staff as needed over the last month. I think it's important that we take a moment of silence for those whose lives have been lost. Thank you. I wanted to begin by just giving a quick update on our systemic improvement plan. Clearly, there's a report on this this evening, but I wanted to just acknowledge that this is work that we're going to talk about. And the work that we have to systemically improve the Boston Public Schools, which I acknowledge is the core work ahead of us, couldn't happen without a major and important partnership with the city. And I particularly want to thank Mayor Wu and her team for all the support, both on the systemic improvement plan agreement that we came to with the state, but more importantly, for the work they continue to support each and every day on behalf of improving the Boston Public Schools. This work is so important to the mayor. So she's here this evening to provide some opening remarks on tonight's presentation. It is my honor to introduce Mayor Michelle Wu. Mayor Wu, I would like to again thank you for being an ally as we do this work in service of our students.
She hasn't signed on yet.
I'm seeing this note. I apologize. This is the problem during the meeting. When the mayor is here, we'll give her an opportunity. I know it's really important to her as we head into the 15th just to make some opening remarks. And so please do feel free to interrupt me should she log on. I wanted to give the committee and the community an update on where we are relative to summer learning. We've had a very busy summer. I want to thank the team of teachers, educators, administrators, school support staff, and school leaders who have worked hard to ensure that our students have had an enriching and safe summer experience. They too, our students too, have worked hard to make sure that our programs were effective and have really, I think, engaged actively in learning. As far as the attendance goes, here is where we stand. We have served well over 10,000 students during the summer. Specifically, our fifth quarter program, which is one of the largest programs we had, had a 90% attendance rate. And our ESY, our Extended Year Program, for students whose IEP called for an extended year are averaging in excess of 80% daily attendance. Last week, we were honored to host Mayor Wu, who is joined by incoming Superintendent Mary Skipper at the Mildred Avenue K-8 School to celebrate the successes of our summer programming. To date, we offered the largest number of opportunities to students within total 108 different programs, all dedicated in one way or another to project-based learning. I want to lift up a few examples from our schools. Seventh and eighth grade students at the Mildred Ave, K-8, engage in the IXL Math Program to continue to build their math skills. They also enjoyed reading and analyzing novels such as The Outsiders in their literacy circles. Students from the Blackstone Elementary School took a photography class of Harriet Tubman Square. Students at Ellis Elementary School learned how to make a solar system out of gum drops. Fourth and fifth graders in summer learning academies designed their own backpacks, while second graders developed lemonade stands and flyers to market their products. Our kindergarten students learned about life cycles following the metamorphosis of caterpillars into butterflies, which of course were then set free to fly. It was such a fun summer for our students and I'm grateful to the many dedicated educators and BPS staff and community members who made these opportunities possible. The Bridge to Calculus Program, which took place at Northeastern University, is a clear example of how academic rigor was integrated into project and problem-based learning opportunities. Sophomores and juniors worked with Northeastern professors and mentors, many of whom are graduates of the program and were involved in research- and were involved in researching mathematicians for their respective cultures and their impact on scientific models and design. I wanted to speak quickly about the superintendent transition. I am on the phone multiple times a day, either in Zoom or on the cell with incoming Superintendent Mary Skipper. She's been briefed on all aspects of issues relative to the Boston Public Schools and has been actively weighing in on next steps, projects, and upcoming personnel announcements. I'm working with the team to ensure she's ready to hit the ground running, so she has a strong and successful beginning that is critically important to me as we're moving as we're moving forward. We we are less than thirty days out from the start of school. In order to ensure a smooth start of the school year, we will focus our attention on five critical areas. On-time transportation, school assignments, staffing, clear and well-implemented COVID-nineteen protocols, and safe and clean facilities. Before I go into each one of these areas, I believe that Mayor Wu may have joined us, and I just want to one acknowledge her attendance here and want to personally thank her not only for the support relative to our discussions with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education on the Systemic Improvement Plan Agreement, but more importantly, for the support that she provides each and every day to ensure that we have the necessary resources to take ownership for the hard work that we have ahead of us around making the systemic improvements that will improve outcomes and opportunities for the children and families in the city of Boston. She is a great champion and ally of our work, and I think it's important that she have an opportunity to say a few words in advance of the report on this specific issue this evening. So please welcome Mayor Wu.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Eggleston. Really, really grateful for your leadership and I I get to pop in many, many times a week and 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 just getting the summary of the additional tens and hundreds more hours that Drew and the entire team are putting in with a lot going on. So I I just wanted to come by mostly to say thank you so much for all that you've been doing. Good evening, Madam Chair and all of the school committee members. Thank you so much for your leadership and I see members of the BPS leadership team on as well, Liz, everyone. Thank you to our interpreters and and all of our school community members. I hope everyone's end of summer is is still going strong. I know in my household, we wrapped up the weeks of formal camp. The Boston Nature Center camp was a godsend, but now that is over. And so we're doing the juggle a little bit in my household and trying to keep up the energy momentum and count down the days from a family's perspective, how excited we are to get started and and the kids had met their teachers at the end of last school year and and thought in their minds that they would be going right back to school. So it's been a little bit of a helping them contextualize how many days it's been, and and that's a lot for all the family members about doing that juggle. And then on the other end, the countdown is kind of feels like a squeeze if we're running out of time from all that needs to happen in terms of preparation on the school transportation front, on the making sure we are aligned with the partnership with DESI and the state and preparations for facilities and school buildings and enrollment and everything that that we are really working hard hour by hour to make sure that the start of school goes smoothly. A couple of big pieces have been great bright spots, marking huge milestones and huge steps forward. So I want to thank again Drew and Jerry and the team working hand in hand with Boston Teachers Union for getting us to a point where we are set with a tenant with an agreement with our educators that will make sure that we're headed to a strong start at the beginning of the year and this historic agreement between BPS and the Boston Teachers Union really supercharges our efforts and and resources that will be going into supporting particularly students with disabilities, but the ability for our educators to have what they need and for therefore for our young people to have what they need. We continue to solidify the pieces of our Green New Deal for Boston Public Schools and innovation and early college pathways. I hear there are we soon will have a taste testing or preview of the new school foods that will come with the the contract with our local vendor and partner City Fresh Foods. And we've really been accelerating efforts around early education, the universal pre-K part through Boston Public Schools and the community members and organizations that help us expand that reach across the community. So it's really been an all-hands-on-deck effort, and I want to thank everyone. The kind of Oscar of the BPS prep world for jumping in most in unexpected circumstances goes to the BPS transportation team. So Dell and everyone with the news about the Orange Line and the MBTA's rather set in shut down plans for four weeks to make some necessary big improvements that will coincide with the first week of school has I can't even begin to describe how much thought from every angle is going into this. And so really, really want to thank our operations and transportation team for jumping right in and making sure that we will have as much dedicated focus on getting our students and educators to school as possible. And we're really thinking outside the box in a lot of ways daily and and talking with the MBTA as well. And I know we'll we'll get to announce more of those specifics once the T announces their exact diversion plans and shuttle plans in addition. So I know later tonight is when everyone will get the detailed update about the systemic improvement plan and partnership with DESI, but I I will spoiler alert that all of the checkpoints and goals and items that need to be done by the first set of deadlines, August fifteenth, BPS under Drew's leadership and Mary's constant Superintendent Skipper's constant partnership, even as she is not yet fully full-time and still managing some of the transition from Somerville. We are on track to hit all of these milestones or have already completed them. And so that has been tremendous work and want to give a special thank you again to Drew and in addition to Monica Hogan, JJ Munoz, and the entire BPS team for all that you've been doing on this front. I've always said that the DESI partnership and the items that are laid out for us to be on the same page with the state represent the baseline, the bar for our expectations for the system. We are we are doing much more than what is captured in that document, and so we're grateful to the state for leaning in and providing some resources and targeted support and partnership on these items, but there's a whole lot more, and so our standards go much higher than the the DESTI agreement, and we're already seeing the fruits of that in the type of preparation happening in in these weeks. Superintendent Skipper, incoming Superintendent Skipper, again, starts September twenty-sixth, but I'm on the phone with her constantly, and I know she and Drew and the team are on the phone even more frequently than that. So it's been really exciting, and I know the the structures and the organization and the academic preparation, the operational preparation, all of that ties together. And so we have some incredible, very hard-working leaders at the top of of all of these plans, and I'm so grateful to be able to work alongside you. So thank you, everyone, for all that you're doing and looking forward to the getting closer to final, final preparations for the start of school and and the exciting chance to see our our students' faces back in classrooms and passing out pencils and and seeing everyone there.
Thank you, Mayor Wu, for your unwavering support of the Boston Public Schools and for the children and families in the city of Boston. Your support means everything to us, and I think we are well-positioned because of your leadership and the support of your team. So it's from the bottom of my heart, I really deeply appreciate it. This moving continuing back into the superintendent report, I was sort of teeing up that there are several sort of really critical areas to ensure that we are ready for the first day of school. That we need to ensure on-time transportation. We need to ensure that our school assignments are done and our students are routed in a timely manner for whatever bus services they might require. Our staffing needs to be completed, and we need to have educators in classrooms who are ready and prepared for our brilliant students. We need to have clear and well-implemented COVID-nineteen protocols in safe and clean facilities. The transportation team is working to hire bus drivers and bus monitors. We set a goal, an ambitious goal, this at the onset of the summer, to hire ninety new school bus drivers by the start of the school year. To date, seventy-eight drivers have been hired either with their commercial driver's license or in our specialized program hosted by BPS and TransDev that allows them to earn CDL training and licensure at the conclusion of that training module. As you all know, and it's sort of widely reported at this point, the state's Public Transportation Agency, the MBTA, will be shutting down all Orange Line service for for four weeks, starting Friday, August nineteenth at nine P M through Sunday, September eighteenth. While the team is working around the clock to ensure that students and staff have a safe and reliable way to and from school, it's important to be realistic that this will have major impacts on our students, on our families and our staff right at the beginning of the school year, specifically when it comes to on-time performance and student attendance. It is our greatest hope that during this time, the MBTA will swiftly address the systemic issues that impact our students, staff, and all public transportation travelers. I want the community to be aware that everyone should expect updates over the next several weeks, as the mayor stated, as we continue to collaborate with our state and local partners to address. I want to thank the mayor for the continued partnership as we navigate what lies ahead. Mayor Wu and her team is making this a priority issue, and I appreciate the support, not only of BPS, but the level of communication at the cabinet level to ensure that all city agencies are working in collaboration around tackling this problem. We will continue to communicate updates and changes to our BPS families every week. We have created a staff survey to solicit feedback and to encourage all of our staff to respond to that survey by August twelfth. We're also analyzing the schools that will be most impacted by this stoppage, either because the school is located on the Orange Line or because we have large numbers of students who will use the MBTA and in specifically the Orange Line to get to school. In doing customized communication with those communities to find out what those needs are, so we can be transparent and clear with the state and city about the resources and investments that will be required in order for us to successfully respond to this moment. As it relates to enrollment, we are currently contacting families on multiple waitlists. The deadline for families to choose one waitlist is Friday, August twelfth. Dropping to one waitlist helps families move up in rank and operationalizes the process of making assignments from those lists. Families can call or email Welcome Services to share their decision or enter their information by visiting the Boston Public School website and entering in their student ID and RSVD code, both found on the letter that they received. In terms of hiring, we are working to ensure that all positions will be fully staffed for the first day of school. We have the following in place. All school leaders are currently seated. To date, we have hired nine hundred ninety-six teachers. We have one hundred and sixteen teacher hires in progress and roughly two hundred and thirty vacancies. We have also hired one hundred and thirty-four paraprofessionals, have twenty-five hires in progress, and have approximately ninety-seven vacancies. We have hired twenty-one nurses, have six nurses in progress, and six vacancies for that role. In terms of COVID-nineteen preparedness, we are working with the Boston Public Health Commission around our COVID-nineteen and monkeypox planning. We are finalizing the COVID-nineteen protocols this week and expect to be able to begin communicating expectations with families and staff next week. Our facilities and operation teams have been working to patch the parking lots throughout the district and have had ongoing conversations around filling water filling stations in schools. The air conditioning installation initiative continues across the district. Facilities condition assessment is ongoing, and our team continues to track all the work orders for monitoring processes for school improvement and deferred maintenance. There will be a robust update at the August thirty thirty-first school school committee meeting on a report on our first day of of school readiness. We are also scheduling a number of welcome-back community meetings in late August to communicate our readiness, to get feedback on different ideas, and to be sure that we are explicit and transparent and clear about various aspects of of our own readiness, including COVID-nineteen protocols. That's my superintendent report for this evening. I'm now happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Eggleston, for that report, and special thanks to Mayor Wu for joining us this evening. Mayor Wu has been at the table with DESI every step of the way, helping us reach an agreement, and she continues to offer leadership and support to ensure that BPS reaches these important milestones. We are grateful for her unwavering commitment to Boston Public Schools, students, and families. Any questions from members? I have one question, Dr. Eggleston. Given the excessive heat, I was wondering how that impacted attendance during the summer, in particular of any of the programs, particularly in schools that may not have had air conditioning.
Yeah, we did our best to keep our schools open over the summer, certainly. You know, that was uncomfortable for many, but we we also acknowledge that many of our students don't have access to air conditioning at home and wanted to ensure that they had access to things like cold water and food and opportunities to continue to learn. We certainly also communicated to families to use their best judgment and to make the best decision for their children as they were considering whether or not to send their child to school, particularly during moments of of really oppressive heat. With that said, our attendance rates at summer were some of the highest that we've had. Our fifth quarter program had consistently ninety percent attendance rates across the program. Our ESY program was in the mid-eighties, and so we still found that our students were continuing to come to school and attendance was was quite remarkable considering the situation.
Thank you. My other question is about trying to understand a little bit about the waitlist. And my question is, I know for the first time, we will the exam schools will also offer waitlists. So with with the piece that you shared with us tonight, is that the same response with regard to the waitlist in the exam schools?
I think it's different, Chair, but before I answer that question and say something that's incorrect, I might look to see phone a friend and see if one of my colleagues is on the call, particularly Denise Snyder or potentially Monica Hogan, who might be able to communicate what our waitlist policy is outlined in the circular on this issue.
Yeah, hi Drew. I think that I can probably answer that question better. So when we talk about waitlists, the idea that families who are on multiple waitlists are being asked at this point to choose the one they want to remain on, which makes it have to it makes it easier for us to quickly identify and work the lists to place people in schools. But with exam schools, they do not have to drop to one. It is such a small pool. It's just you're going to be on up to two and probably only on one based on the fact that there are only three exam schools, that that really doesn't apply in the same need, so we don't ask them to drop.
Thank you. Mr. Cardad Hernandez.
I thank you so much for the report. I have a few questions, and I'll start just with some staffing questions you shared. I have a few questions and I'll start just with some staffing questions. You shared some exciting momentum and then obviously. Some areas of concern. I think that, you know, rightly so, we should be nervous about and also full recognition. Around the national staffing crisis for educators across the country. I'm curious with the two hundred and thirty vacancies for teachers and specifically the ninety-seven vacancies for paraprofessionals. I guess two things, sort of what's the plan, sort of what happens and sort of do we think we're going to realize no vacancies by within the next month? And then if not, what happens? What can a family expect? And then I think sort of third question, I had previously asked about the use of S R funds for hiring incentives and any of these other sort of strategies. To hopefully even recruit from outside of the district, the way that other districts have recruited from us. To bring folks back into the fold and if we were able to deploy any of those strategies as well.
If it's okay, I'm going to break this up into two parts. Part one is essentially as I hear the question is, what is the district doing to close the gap? Between where you currently are relative to hiring and where you need to be, which is zero vacancies. And so you know, the Dr. Grandson is on the call, so in a moment I'll defer to him to share a little bit about the work that we're doing. Around the recruitment aspect of this. And then the second part of this question, which I think is also equally important, which is if you don't get to this zero vacancy number. And there are some really hard decisions that need to happen, how will those positions be addressed? And what will be the communication to families? And so we'll we'll tackle both of those questions separately. So I'll ask Dr. Grandson to tackle the first question relative to recruitment strategies. And I'll take the second question around what the response will be if we don't actually meet the goals that we have.
Thanks, Dr. Eggleson, and good evening, committee members. So as it relates to recruitment, we have an amazing recruitment team who've been just working around the clock this summer and spring. And there's a few strategies I'll say that are in progress. One is we've done a lot of work over the last few months and around cultivating. Pool of qualified applicants. And so a lot of what the team does is screen through the tens of almost up towards. I think it's upwards of ten thousand applicants that we have, but to make sure that we go, many of them are applying to multiple jobs. And that we're recommending them to school leaders for the appropriate jobs that that's the best fit in terms of licensure and grade level. And a lot of that work is being done on a school by school basis. And now we're at a point where we're working directly with school superintendents. Who've identified the top twenty schools that have the highest vacancies, so that we're able to be more targeted. Higher education, we have about twenty higher education partners that we have MOUs with. They work with our pipeline programs. We've had pre-existing recruitment relationships with them. And so we're constantly in contact with them and sending email blasts and they're supporting us. Right now, what we're looking to do is ramp back up on a strategy that we've had this past January to try to get a larger convening. Boston University is helping us with that to bring many much more of the partners together and the ask there will be. Do you have student teachers or graduate students who could jump in day one, support, sign up to be substitute teachers? While we have a pool of four hundred substitute teachers, often it's hard to get that consistency because folks are assigned to. You know, Monday or Wednesday or Tuesday or Thursday upon their, based on their availability. And then I'll just briefly also add that. We've reached out and had a great meeting today with some of our faith-based community leaders. And so as a part of our recruitment and hiring campaign there. We're preparing quarter sheets and digital materials for our faith communities to share with their congregations. At their weekend services. And a lot of that work is also working directly with. Reach out to us to make sure that they're getting support going through the hiring system. Those are some of our efforts as it relates to how we'll, how we're targeting, trying to close that gap.
Thank you so much for that. A question off of that question, I know, Dr. Eggleson, you're gonna answer the second part of this. So fair to say, no, we haven't deployed any sort of hiring bonus strategy or anything like that, or have, sorry.
Yeah, we're sorry. Sorry, I forgot about that one. So last year as a part of a Desi grant, we did an initial pilot of. A signing bonus for teachers in the hard to recruit areas. But specifically, it was targeted around Latinx teachers and black teachers. And so. That is something that is continuing this year. And you know, something that we happy to get more information and report back to the committee on sort of the data progress on that initiative. But that's been, it's been located in that sort of narrowing.
Thank you. And then just one more question about that two hundred and thirty vacancies. Do you know in what areas those vacancies are currently existing in?
That's pretty broad. I would say there's no one area. I know that there's a great need in in terms of ESL. But it's pretty consistent across, I think, high school and ESL are the, I'm sorry, elementary and ESL are the largest areas.
It would be, if we can get that data, that would be really helpful to just to have and understand where we're seeing. The hardest areas to recruit right now.
We have that data readily available and we'd be happy to make it available. Two, two quick additions to what. Dr. Grandson added, one, one thing I really appreciate that the OHC team and Office of Human Capital team is doing. Is that they are also, to Dr. Grandson's point, they're obviously evaluating each applicant who's coming in. And while an applicant might apply for job A, for which he she or there is maybe not certified or licensed. But has a set of knowledge and skills for other positions, they're trying to be very strategic and mindful. That just because this applicant isn't a fit for this specific job, they might be an an appropriate applicant for another position at the school level. Or in the BPS. And so they're really trying to be as strategic and focused as possible of capitalizing on the people who are expressing interest. Across BPS. And then I think to build off of the of the work that Dr. Grandson mentioned, we are in conversations with our finance team to look at. Signing bonuses for specifically for hard to staff positions. Certainly, we've used this strategy as part of our contract negotiations agreement with the bus drivers. For signing bonuses for for new employees. And we've made adjustments to those things when four thousand dollar signing bonus was bringing in some people, but not quite enough. We added that to, we added seven thousand dollar signing bonus or added three additional thousand dollars to increase to seven thousand total. And that has increased the number of applicants for us. So we'll sort of continue to look at this for other roles as we sort of get deeper into the summer. I think there are a number of strategies we're using as we start to continue to take a look, this number two hundred and thirty-ish, that sort of. Of the sort of number of vacancies that we have in in teaching positions. This is pretty typical at this point in the summer. We certainly posted far more positions than we ever have because of new investments made by the school committee and the city council and things like new librarians. New school counselors, et cetera. And so that was just more staffing that our school leaders and our central office, OHC team. And Dr. Grant's team and RCD sort of needed to manage and support. We have a pool of educators, suitable capacity educators, who are high quality educators who have a set of licenses. Who may not be matched to a school. So at some point in the summer, we can deploy those individuals to places where we have vacancies. And then obviously, we need to ensure that our their school leaders are making the most strategic and thoughtful decisions around. Who, who, which of our students need high quality educators in front of them as immediately as possible. And so there's a circular that I'm working on as part of our work with the systemic improvement plan and part of our discussions with the Department of Justice. To make sure that students like our multilingual learners and our students with disabilities. That we are ensuring that those students are getting access to high quality licensed educators. Getting priority relative to that. And so there may be some decisions that need to happen at the school level. If a school is going into a place where they still have three or four vacancies at the start of school, where things need to scramble. And we need to ensure that we are placing the best possible educators for groups of students that we know need them the most. And so that's part of the strategy work that we'll be doing and part of our conversations with the Department of Justice. And that they're really hoping that we're going to prioritize that through a circular, which I'm working on. Thank you. I have other questions, but I'll save them because my time's up.
All right, Mr. Tran, sorry.
I'm so, I'm sorry. Very quick questions, maybe a couple of questions as a matter of fact. Just to follow up on. Member Carter Hernandez's questions regarding. Hiring and. Ways to reach out to different groups of high, you know, for 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 positions. Boston is pretty diverse. And the workforce out there, I'm, I'm, I'm sure would include a. A whole range of class of different people. So. I haven't seen, the first question is, I haven't seen any. Information or any kind of statistical data. On the hiring or retention of. Veterans, are disabled veterans. And groups that are hard to reach, like American Indians. Are there any kind of efforts in in those areas? That's my first question. The second question is is kind of specific. You mentioned that there is a large need for for ESL teachers. Aside from, aside from. Certification, ESL certifications. That may qualify a person to teach ESL. Are there any other means of. Vading the person in terms of language? I have seen a couple of. ESL teachers in my native language that are not exactly fluent in my native language. So I'm, I'm, I'm. Wondering whether, aside from the, the, the certification. Are there other ways, other means to ensure that ESL teachers that are hired. Are in fact. Qualified in teaching ESL. So those are the two, you know, questions that I have. Thank you.
Yeah, to my knowledge, Mr. Tran, to your first question, I'm not aware of specific recruitment. For the two specific groups of employees that you mentioned, I can certainly follow up with the team. And be prepared to share more about that in our August thirty-first meeting as we sort of update the committee in more detail about where we are with staffing. And so I'll be prepared to answer that question if you could ask it again at the next meeting, but I'm not aware of anything. But if there is anything, I'll be sure to to comment on that.
Thank you.
As it relates to your second question, are significant efforts that are put in place from the RCD team and others across BPS. To ensure that we are providing supports to either current BPS educators who are interested. Particularly those educators who have native language proficiency and in the language other than English, who are looking to become licensed in ESL. This is really critical to us as you'll sort of hear an update about tonight. And as you will hear in the fall, as we update you on our strategic plan for multilingual learners. You will hear that there is a real pivot toward. Toward a type of instruction that includes native language instruction. We, part one of the strategy, right, including educating people about why that's a good model for our students. Is to ensure that we have the requisite staff that has the right certification and also the native language proficiency. So we have an obligation and a responsibility to make sure that we are training educators and supporting educators. To achieve the ESL license, particularly those educators who might hold a license in another area. Those are really robust and strong program. I don't have all the evidence and data in front of me around. The return on investment from that program, but I am aware that is, it is a quite strong program. And it's something that that the Desi highlighted in their review as a real strength and something that set BPS apart from other urban districts in the Commonwealth. Doesn't mean that there isn't significantly more work that we have to do on that front. But I do think we are uniquely well positioned as a result of the of our learning from that program as we're continuing to do that work. And then under Dr. Grandson's leadership and the work of the RCD team, obviously, it is important to us to ensure. Linguistically diverse. Teacher core, educator core, as we're sort of moving forward, in part because that's part of our academic strategy. And so we'll continue to ensure recruitment efforts that increase the number of educators who add and contribute. To the linguistic diversity of our staff.
Thank you. I'll follow up later, later on in the next meeting or so.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tran. Mr. Cardet Hernandez, you had another question?
I did. And you may have. Explained this during your presentation. I just missed it. So apologies. One, I, I'm sure you feel the same way. I think there is. A need for folks to be extremely kind and sensitive to the system, given the transportation issues. We assumingly will face as so many employees and family members, but also just like Bostonians in general. Are going to be impacted by the orange line. I guess, and I'm thinking, I'm asking this question selfishly as a parent, but also. Possibly it's a leading question because I think it would like behoove us to set a hard date. So I'm just curious, you gave us a top lines on some sort of like milestones internally that you guys are working towards. I guess, when can a parent expect to hear the plan for their students' transportation? Good news or bad news? Like, we, we might not be delivering the answer we want to offer. But it will give a parent enough of a runway to make alternative plans if needed. So my fear is we're moving into September and a parent would not know the plan for their individual students' transportation. And so sort of what's the timeline you're operating under for communication?
Yeah, thank you so much for the question. I just need to be honest is that I can't answer that question right at this specific moment in time. And if I were to provide you an answer, it it would just wouldn't be accurate. I, you know, we learned of this information, or let me just speak for myself, I learned of this information on Twitter. Obviously, we have been well briefed by the mayor and her team. It has been the total focal point of all of our cabinet meetings since, since the announcement. I was on vacation last week in Yellowstone with very minimal cellphone service. And so I'm really coming back, you know, sort of a week out of this notice. And we are trying to do honestly, work as exceptionally hard as we can. You know, the best laid plans are always things that you sort of need to be prepared may not always work. I cannot, I cannot acknowledge and thank the Department of Transportation who really set us on a point where. I was really convinced that we were going to be so well positioned from a transportation perspective to meet or exceed the goals. That we've, we've committed to, to our community. And this is obviously a really important barrier that we need to talk through. And I need to be honest that this is going to be a real challenge for us. I also don't have specific answers right at this specific moment. I am super committed to ensuring that there is going to be a really clear plan on or before the August thirty-first. School committee meeting in which we're talking about transportation. I just can't tell you that in two, we're going to have really detailed plan around what shuttles are going to look like or where we're going to be. You know, meeting students and driving them directly to schools, like all of this is really in flux at this specific moment. The mayor is really convening, stating, pleased to really work with us, but there's just so much to figure out. And this is certainly something that's going to keep me up through Labor Day every night as as the entire team is working tirelessly on this single issue. So that's the best I can do. I apologize. And I acknowledge that that's not a concrete answer, but it's an honest one of where we are.
I figured that you wouldn't have an answer this evening for sure. What I, I guess my only. What I, I guess my only push here, and maybe this is before the, the, our next school committee meeting, is that there's at least some sort of high level benchmarks around a timeline where family can expect additional communication. I think sometimes like the sort of rolling communication creates further anxiety. And so if we build some of those milestones, I think it would allow families to make plans, even if that plan is as a result of them feeling like the system hasn't been able to address their unique need. I think the ask of people to just like wait till we are able to give you information, despite how unpredictable this current moment actually is, I think still just creates an unnecessary chaos. So my only ask here is that as we are operating in a space of not knowing that part of that is telling families really clearly that we don't have enough information to give them information so that they can make alternative plans versus the sort of like, we're going to figure it out, just give us time, that I think sometimes gets us into trouble. Yeah.
I'll just say message heard and we will take this into consideration and do the best we can to offer both honest and accurate information and to also forecast for people what they can expect, when they can expect it, so long as we think that that's accurate information.
Are there any further questions?
I have one more transportation question, and it's just connected to, I guess, there's this immediate need to address issues impacted by the orange line. But I am also curious if the transportation team is recognizing that there will also be a need possibly in sort of a rerouting to address like increased traffic across the city and sort of lower movement of, of people. And if that is also part of the plan, right?
I can just assure you that that is very actively at the core of some of the issues. This is part of what makes this is such a complicated issue. This isn't just trying to resolve a specific issue around schools that are around the orange line. This is a really sort of complex issue that's going to, that's going to increase traffic. And we are talking about, I can just assure you, we're talking about all of those issues and trying to come to resolution about how we'll respond and to be as communicative as, as we possibly can with the community.
That makes sense, which I, I think probably leads me to connecting back to the previous question, which is like, if that then means that there is possibly earlier pickups for families that will be impacted. Like, I think even clarity around the possibility of that is the thing that I'm talking about needing to communicate. So families can start even thinking about their morning routine a little bit differently in anticipation for news that will be coming down the pike around how that will look.
Certainly message heard and we will do our best to respond to that feedback, which I think is really instructive and important.
Any further questions? All right. Thank you, Dr. Eggleston, for your report. And now we will move on to public comment. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, students, and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but refer to superintendent for later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. We have five speakers this evening. Each person will have three minutes to speak. And I will remind you when you have 30 seconds remaining. Those who require interpretation services will receive an additional two minutes. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or choose a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name, affiliation, what neighborhood you were from before you begin. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. When I call your name, please raise your hand virtually in Zoom. Also, please make sure you're signed into Zoom with the same name that you used to sign up for public comment. That will allow us to identify you when it's your turn to testify. We'll begin this evening with Lisa Jean Graff, followed by John Mudd, Mike Heishman, Sharon Hinton, and Roseanne Tong. You could please raise your virtual hands. Lisa?
Hello, my name is Lisa Jean Graff, and I'm a member of Boston Sped Pack and live in the Fenway. Currently, the Boston Public Schools is hiring inclusive practices support specialists. These new staff will work collaboratively with central and school-based teams to provide direct support to general inclusive and substantially separate classrooms. Assistance will be given in developing and implementing instructional strategies in academics, behavior, and/or social skills. This assistance may vary for individuals, small group, or classroom support. This new approach offers a great opportunity to offer classrooms that have a neurodiversity framework, offering supports preferred by the disability community and don't use applied behavioral analysis. Currently, there is only one option for students in substantially separate classrooms who are autistic in ABA environment. Currently, some students in general ed and inclusion classrooms have ABA services through their IEPs, but the students around them are not forced to have an ABA environment too. Moving forward, it is important that students in general ed and inclusion continue to be placed in classroom environments that do not embed ABA. Also, it is important for the district to offer substantially separate classrooms for autistic students that do not embed ABA in the classroom environment. Organizations like Autistics Unmasked, Pathways Academy, and the Program for Inclusion and Neurodiversity Education can provide training or staffing to help support a neurodiversity framework. In addition, the new green, in addition, the Green New Deal could include a focus on classroom spaces that are comfortable for students with sensory sensitivities, comfortable sensory environments, including no fluorescent lights would be a benefit to all students through universal design. The current job description for inclusive practices support specialists puts a preference on hiring board-certified behavioral analysis. Staff who do this work are generally not knowledgeable about alternatives to ABA and generally have a bias towards behavioralist approaches. I recommend that this preference be removed from the job posting as well as adding a priority to hiring neurodiverse and disabled candidates, including those who are autistic. I would also recommend that candidates for these roles are knowledgeable about the neurodiversity movement and supports preferred by the disability communities. Please use this great opportunity to hire forward-looking staff and also offer training in neurodiversity to current staff. Please offer more options for parents so that their child can receive the most beneficial supports and services and have the best educational experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Mudd.
Did I make it?
You did. Good evening.
Okay, sorry. I should be proficient, but I'm not. My name is John Mudd. I'm a resident of Cambridge, longtime education advocate in Boston and the grandfather of a student in the Boston Public Schools. I don't want to overstate it, but my concern tonight is that the policymaking role of the school committee seems to be being circumvented in the process of BPS sending its August 15th progress report on the MOU to DSE without presenting a draft of the full report to the school committee and the public first. By law and by bylaw, the school committee is the policymaking body of the school department. The MOU clearly reflects policy and so will the details of any reports to the state. The update distributed for this meeting is at such a general level, it is hard to know what it really means. Yet we've been told that the state should see the full progress report first. I don't get it. I would think that the state commissioner would want to know that all parts of the BPS community understand are behind and are behind implementing the changes required in the MOU. If this consultation doesn't happen, I fear the precedent that this process could set. Will the superintendent and BPS staff negotiate policy directly with the state without including the school committee and the Boston public in these critical issues? This already seems to be happening. The update lists a number of feedback meetings with DSE, but not with the school committee or the community. To me, that makes a mockery of transparency. As a member of the LLL Task Force, I'm also particularly concerned with how BPS proposes to implement the requirement in the MOU for providing access to native language for English learners and English learners with disabilities, as the interim superintendent mentioned. This will require two different plans, one by the Office of English Learners and a second by the Office of Special Education. Is there a recognition and commitment to this? Where is the expertise to develop these plans? None of this is dealt with in the update, which is little more than a vague outline of planned priorities with no detail. Finally, I have a concern, there is a danger that the MOU could become the de facto strategic plan for the school system. When in fact, the strategic vision approved by the school committee goes well beyond the terms of the MOU by establishing priorities for eliminating achievement gaps, teacher diversity, and equity throughout the school system. We can't forget that the MOU is only one piece of the puzzle. As the superintendent and the mayor recognized, our commitments for transforming the Boston Public Schools are much broader. Thank you for hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mudd. Our next speaker is Mike Heishman.
Mike Heishman, Dorchester Beja. Thank you, John Mudd. I want to fully agree and endorse everything you just said. Thank you, Liz Sullivan, for promptly responding to my email. That would be, was very, very helpful. Another historic heat wave. We contrast the T. How are some of our children going to get to school in the fall? What will happen when there'll be additional breakdowns? We're at war with Russia and are risking war with China. It is rare for the two major political parties at the national level to agree on anything important except for increased spending for war and empire. The president and Congress are incapable of solving our major problems. Many believe we are heading towards systems collapse. The good news is that there is a growing support in Boston Public Schools for equity for all. The problem is that most of us dream that all of our children have a high-quality 20th century education. A major disagreement is which of our best and brightest should have the opportunity to study Latin for six years and have a classical education? Is this the kind of education that they and our community need? We can't say calm and cool without shouting hallelujah. We pray that our children will do better on the racist standardized tests. I wish that I were optimistic about the future. We confronted with monumental problems, our leaders behave like ostriches. We messed up big time with COVID-19. Now we have monkeypox. If you don't believe that more serious viruses are coming, you are an ostrich. There's the school committee did ask, what will life be like in 2030? Do you did, did ask, what should our educational system be like? If you feel to ask these questions, it's ostrich time. I probably won't be around in 2030. I don't think it's going to be pretty. I do believe that the 20th century education that you and I received was good enough for you and me. I'm convinced that it's not the right, not right now, the kind of education that our children and community need. Another school year will become opening soon. COVID-19 is still in the air and still highly contagious. The way we dealt with the virus was insufficient to protect our children and our educational workers. The CDC is not only a scientific organization, but a political one as well. Your advice has been insufficient and unsafe. No one can clearly predict what will happen to the virus this school year. If necessary, you must stop obeying the CDC. Your primary responsibility must be to protect the health of our children, your educational workers, and the public. There is nothing more important than that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Heishman. Sharon Hinton is not signed into the meeting, so our next speaker will be Roseanne Tong.
Thank you for the chance to speak. I'm the parent of a recent BPS alum who spoke two languages at home. I've studied Boston Public Schools through the lens of opportunity for over 20 years. I'm a member of the English Language Learners Task Force and chair of its committee focused on Look Act implementation. I'm here to ask that the process for drafting, implementing, and monitoring the systemic improvement plan be respectful and inclusive. By respectful, I mean of people's time, effort, and feedback. By inclusive, I mean of people most impacted and knowledgeable, families, practitioners, and community members. In a context of shrinking enrollment, English learners are a fast-growing and changing group within BPS. More than half of BPS students speak a language other than English at home. Our goal should be to keep it that way while also supporting students to learn English. The task force, 14 volunteers with expertise in multilingual learning, was created a dozen years ago in the context of the Department of Justice Settlement Agreement. Its charge is to guide and monitor the school committee, superintendent, and BPS in the vision and action plan for BPS students whose home language is not English. For the past several years, the task force has provided written and verbal feedback at every turn to OEL, the consultants they hire, the school committee, and superintendents in their various efforts at an OEL strategic plan. Yet, we don't have a plan. On June 28th, the DSE asked for one by August 15th. BPS must develop a system for ELS to access grade-level content and share a draft strategic plan for access to native language literacy. Since the ELL Task Force was created to guide, to provide guidance, immediately after the June 28th announcement, our co-chairs informed the superintendent and OEL leadership that members were ready and willing to support the drafting of the plans. There were 10 weeks for a respectful and inclusive process to occur this summer, one that could incorporate some of our recommendations from the past several years and now. Our logic was that this process might include meetings and rounds of drafts, feedback, and revision from the task force, parent advocacy groups, community leaders, and the school committee. I, I agree with John Mudd. The document that DSE receives should have already been vetted widely. However, it's August 10th and a few task force members received a 43-page draft for the first time at 3:43 today. I'm not sure when the school committee members received a draft, nor whether it was in time for them to prepare for this meeting. As a task force member and community member, I would like to do my part. Clearly, the process has not yet been respectful nor inclusive, and I'm frustrated. I hope the process moving forward improves.
Thank you. Chair Robinson, that concludes our speakers for general public comment. Chair, you're muted.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, and thank you to those of you who spoke this evening and shared your perspective. Your testimony is extremely important to us. We will now hear an update on the district's implementation of the systemic improvement plan. Before I turn it over to Monica Hogan, Assistant Superintendent of Data Strategy Implementation, I'd like to invite Dr. Eggleston to provide opening comments.
Well, thank you, Chair. I am, it's an honor to be here this evening and to share.
I am, it's an honor to be here this evening and to share our work to date. I just want to make a few points on this matter and particularly sort of leverage some of the comments that happened during public speak to put some of this work in context. One, and just one, and I think the first point I'd like to make is to just acknowledge that this is just one fraction of the work in front of BPS. And certainly, it's not my belief, and I don't think the belief of this larger organization, that the systemic improvement plan in any way replaces our district strategic plan. I know that, that is my personal opinion. I also know that that to be true of incoming superintendent skipper who's committed to the strategic priorities and goals that are outlined in that plan. I do, however, acknowledge that the spirit of the DESI review and the spirit of the systemic improvement plan, which from my perspective is that BPS must fundamentally do business differently, is a really accurate description of things that we need to tackle as an organization. When we look at issues as we sort of dive into this presentation around some of the challenges we've had at, for example, in transportation, one might look at those challenges and assume that it's a specific issue with the Transportation Department. One, behind the scenes, people have no clue how hard the individuals and the Transportation Department work each and every day to deliver on a promise of on-time performance for students. But the challenges aren't related to necessarily the work of the Transportation Department, but are challenges that are connected to the systemic issues that surround that work. That is the thing we must confront as a BPS team, that the way that we do business often puts us into silos in these isolated organizations. And the true work is going to be cross-functional approaches toward challenging complex problems that we face. I want to thank Monica Hogan and her team, who have been working collaboratively across the BPS to tackle some of these challenges. It is true, we are under some tight timelines. I'm proud of the work that we've done to prepare ourselves for the August 15 deadline. And I want to acknowledge that many of these first timelines are documents that are around drafts. There are things that we have taken feedback from our community partners in so many ways that have inspired the way that we've approached this work. And we have multiple months now to accept feedback, to work with our community partners, to bring these documents forward for school committee consideration as policy documents that will guide the way we think about teaching and learning, particularly for students that we have historically not served well as a system. I think we are starting this position as we sort of enter into these first set of benchmarks from a position of strength. It is a result of the hard work of this entire system, who have worked not only collaboratively, but also to listen to the voices of our stakeholders through systems and structures like CERT and like through our task forces, which sort of guide and instruct the way that we think about this work. So I think what you're going to hear tonight is a story that demonstrates that we are on track to meet or exceed the commitments that are outlined in the systemic improvement. That shouldn't be surprising, in part because we are aware of these issues, and we've been taking personal responsibility and will continue to take personal responsibility as an organization to continue to make progress in these areas that have been deficient for a period of time. And I think we're going to continue to learn from this process as we move forward. As you will hear in this presentation tonight, we have had opportunities to begin to solicit feedback from our DESI partners and from other sort of external partners relative to this work. And I think the feedback we have received thus far certainly suggests that we are on track to meet or exceed these benchmarks that are outlined in the systemic improvement plan. So with that said, I will turn it over to Monica Hogan and her colleagues who are driving this work, and she will introduce you to the team of people through her presentation who have been working on this over the last few weeks and months. Please welcome Monica Hogan.
Thank you, Dr. Eccleston. Good evening, School Committee members. Thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Monica Hogan, Assistant Superintendent for Data Strategy and Implementation, and I am joined by my colleague, JJ Munoz, who is joining the superintendent residency with Acting Superintendent Drew Eccleston for the Harvard EDLD program. JJ's strategic project will focus on supporting the implementation of the strategies and plans made within the focus areas on the systemic improvement plan. And so tonight, we will provide you with a detailed update on implementation thus far. The systemic improvement plan is a three-year plan, which is focused on system-wide improvement. It was agreed to by the City of Boston, Boston Public Schools, and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in June. We meet monthly to discuss progress and make regular updates to the school committee. The plan focuses on seven different areas. In academics, there's special education, English learners, and transportation schools. In operations, there's student safety, transportation, and facilities. And then there's data, which impacts both academics and operations. Additionally, there are two DESI-led initiatives included in the systemic improvement plan, the Kaleidoscope Collective for Learning, which is an initiative focused on deeper learning in a region of schools. And the design of a performance management framework, which is intended to clarify the necessary outcomes, conditions, and resources to support improved teaching and student success. Each focus area has a team lead and multiple team members to support the work, with weekly check-in meetings to monitor progress and identify areas in need of support. This slide shows the pictures of the team leads for each of the focus areas. This group represents leaders across the district in departments who are working to move this work forward. We want to thank these team leaders for their continued work to improve our services to the children and families of the City of Boston. These tables display the team members for each area with multiple departments represented, as well as our colleagues from city home. The systemic change that is underway requires a coordinated, all-hands-on-deck approach. While these are the individuals in each of these groups, people across the organization have been involved in moving this work forward and are critical to ensuring its sustainability. Before we go into the specifics of the upcoming deadlines, we wanted to take a moment and highlight the systems approach that is needed for this work to happen. This plan is about more than simply meeting the milestones that have been agreed to. It is about understanding group causes of systemic issues and changing the way we work to ensure we are fully supporting our children and families. One example of this is in the area of transportation. The Transportation Department alone cannot ensure students are right to school and deport or pass it on time. It must be a collective effort from registering and assigning students to schools in a timely manner, to ensuring our data systems have the most up-to-date information, to hiring and onboarding staff in a timely fashion, and working with our transportation vendor to support implementation of the operational reforms agreed upon in the most recent collective bargaining agreement, to working with school-based operations staff to ensure smooth unloading and loading procedures. This slide displays the items with August 15 deadlines that we will share more about in this presentation. As you can see, all of these items are either completed or on track to be complete on Monday. We will also provide some additional information about items due in the coming weeks or that are ongoing and provide brief updates on their status. And we also want to acknowledge the commitments that DESI made in the systemic improvement plan that have upcoming deadlines. We continue to be in communication with our partners at DESI around these areas. And then in this week, in preparation for these deadlines, district staff have met with senior-level DESI staff in each of the seven areas to review the current state of commitments and receive feedback. We plan to incorporate this feedback prior to finalizing documents for Monday's deadline. Now I'll pass it over to Mr. Munoz to continue.
Thank you, Ms. Hogan. So first, we want to look at the milestones related to the focus areas within academics, multilingual learners, special education, and transformation. I want to share that all of these teams have been working extremely hard as we are preparing for the new school year. The Office of Multilingual and Multicultural Education is on track for both tasks by August 15. The team developed a system for monitoring instruction for our multilingual students and created a superintendent circular that supports areas such as outlining instructional expectations, accountability metrics to ensure that all students are receiving appropriate designated ESL instruction based on their ELD level, and a tool and process for monitoring quality instruction, including guidance on monitoring students who have not met access testing benchmarks. Another document the team has drafted is the Strategic Plan for Multilingual Learners. They will seek feedback from internal and external stakeholders during August and September, and then finalize their plan to present to school committee on October 12. We have identified five priorities that we believe will drive improved service delivery and outcomes for our multilingual learners, including expansion of bilingual programs, ensuring that all multilingual learners with disabilities receive appropriate services, improve instruction and outcomes across multilingual learner programming, develop student-centered systems with an equity lens, partner with multiple stakeholders to increase opportunities towards college and career readiness. These, we are confident that these priorities will improve services and outcomes for our multilingual learners. The Office of Special Education is engaging with the Council of Great City Schools, and the onsite visit will be later this month as BPS is preparing for their arrival. They will be meeting with the variety of stakeholders, both internal and external to BPS, as well as reviewing data and documents. They will provide us with the report outlining recommendations, which we will present back to school committee by mid-November. BPS collaborated with DESI to identify a working group for the McKinley, which will begin to meet this month. The group will focus on improvements for facilities to support students and analyze the integration of instruction and therapeutic supports in the McKinley program. BPS is using a combination of internal and external support to take on key leadership responsibilities until the structure is determined as part of the superintendent transition. The team had productive collaboration about the Special Education Policy and Procedure Manual as we prepared to host training sessions this month for the school personnel to inform them of key points throughout the manual. Transformation Schools, that team revised the Quality School Plan template, which we call the QSP. They have, the plan has components of metrics and objectives for various school teams, such as the Instructional Leadership Team, and the school leaders will also ensure the QSP aligns with the Professional Development Plan for the school year. BPS also has drafted a district prioritization document focusing on three key areas: equitable literacy, mass core, and social and emotional learning. Next, we'll look at the milestones related to the focus areas within operations, facilities, student safety, and transportation. In facilities, bathroom renovation planning is the focus for the first deadline on August 15. Sixteen facilities will be undergoing renovations in a three-phase plan listed on this slide. BPS is on track to begin these renovations during fiscal year 2023, with five complete by July, an additional six complete by August, and the remaining complete by December. Facilities will continue to do a condition assessment and will review all facilities to inform future renovations, which will be completed in the winter of 2023. Now, I want to note, the timelines are extended to account for risk due to supply change challenges and contract availability. The district is focused on accelerating these timelines whenever possible. Student safety began a soft launch earlier this year, and we've started recording data on the number of calls listed on this slide. The Fresh Desk System logs all communications, and the staff can follow up on each ticket submitted. In our student safety report, BPS outlines the purpose of expanding capacity, streamlining processes, and ensuring transparency and accountability for our community. Boston Public Schools will also enlist the services of the Council of Great City Schools to conduct an audit for student and staff safety this fall. They will return for a four-day onsite visit to interview the staff and review information related to safety. They will provide BPS with a roadmap to improve our systems. BPS has an item agreement to hire a coordinator of problem resolution to support complaints the district receives. We are currently moving through this process of interviewing, and will have a coordinator position filled by September 8. And now, Ms. Hogan will share updates about transportation and data. Thank you.
Thank you. So in transportation, the systemic improvement plan also calls for an external party to conduct a diagnostic evaluation. The Council of Great City Schools will conduct an in-person visit later this fall, including staff interviews and document review to inform recommendations. This slide outlines the major operational reforms that were agreed to in the most recent contract between the bus drivers and their employer, our transportation vendor, TransDive. This work will be ongoing throughout the year. Each of these six items have been implemented, and the transportation team is now focused on working with TransDive to ensure accountability for each of these items. For example, the contract now requires a post-bid dry run, meaning drivers have to practice driving their routes prior to the first day of school. The BPS transportation team will be monitoring TransDive work to ensure compliance with this new requirement once the driver bid has been completed and drivers have selected their routes. As Dr. Eccleston mentioned earlier this evening, the MBTA's closure of the Orange Line will have an impact on beginning of school transportation. We are in close communication with our partners at the city and the MBTA in planning, and will continue to share regular updates with the community. And finally, we'll speak about the data focus area. By September 8, the district needs to publish revised withdrawal procedures, including specific controls and train school staff. We are on track to need this deadline. In the spring, the district contracted with Ernst &amp; Young to do an external review of our withdrawal documentation procedures and make recommendations for revisions to procedures as well as controls the district can implement to monitor throughout the year. We are reviewing the proposed revisions and controls with senior DESI staff on Friday and will incorporate their feedback into the revisions. School staff will receive training at the District's Management and Operations Institute during the week of August 22. Moving forward, we will finalize and submit to DESI our August 15 deliverables on Monday. Everything we submit to DESI will also be posted on the BPS website. We will continue providing updates in the superintendent's report at school committee meetings going forward and additional presentations throughout the fall. Thank you for your time, and I will turn it back to you, Chair Robinson, for questions.
Thank you. As you can see, our committee has dwindled, so it's just Mr. O'Neal and myself right now, and I will turn it over to Mr. O'Neal for questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the presentation and the work that is being done. And I think the first question is probably for Superintendent Eccleston. Though the team may want to jump in, what I, I understand, and you, Ms. Hogan, you put on the list the meetings that are being held with DESI. To date, when you have shown them the progress that you are making towards the August fifteenth, has there been any pushback of that's not what we expected, or we thought there was going to be more, or is it more? Yes, we understand, and this is what we were expecting for August fifteenth.
The feedback thus far has been very positive and really consistent with what we expected to hear based on our own analysis of the quality of our work. I also just want to acknowledge that Chair Robinson has been in the vast majority, if not all of those meetings thus far, and will continue to ensure that she's sort of monitoring those discussions and adding her own insights and thoughts as we move forward. The, the feedback has been helpful. In a few cases, we received feedback that has helped us inform the way that we're thinking about refinements between this current day and, and Monday, the, the day that many of the drafts or final products are due. And I'm leaving those meetings even more confident that we are starting off our process and progress relative to this systemic improvement plan from a really strong position. That is clearly a testament to the strength of the BPS team and their, and our community, who has helped really inform a lot of the work that we've done. And I think DESI has been impressed, and I appreciate not only the partnership, but the honest and direct feedback that will continue to allow us to improve our work and product. And we look forward to those conversations with the community as well. I certainly don't want to put the chair on the spot, but I don't know if you want to add anything from these meetings, and certainly members of the team thereafter who have been in them.
No. Okay, um, no, I have found the meetings quite helpful. Also, recognizing the number of DESI staff that are working with the district on each of these various goals. So I mean, you've got three to five members of DESI also attending these meetings and will be providing support. I found that their comments have been very helpful and that the work seems extraordinarily collaborative. Um, and you know, everybody is in the room with the same goal in mind, that we get things right for Boston Public School kids, and as a result of that, create a stronger district moving forward. So I have found them all extremely helpful. Listening to public comment tonight, knowing that most of what we've been working for the August fifteenth is a lot more logistical, just wanting to get some feedback from Dr. Eccleston about how we will incorporate feedback of task forces and other groups as we continue to more move forward into the implementation of a number of the, you know, the items in the MOU.
Yeah, let me answer that question, Chair. Let me sort of root this in a specific example. So I'll take the strategic plan for multilingual learners. The team from OM who've been working on that informed the work, the framework of that plan based on feedback and directives and guidance that we've received from community members, most specifically our English Learner Task Force, that has really informed some of the, the key concepts within that plan. Specifically, we have heard their feedback. We've heard the feedback of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the Department of Justice in this case, that yes, okay, great. We believe that you should be making a pivot toward more native language instruction for, for multilingual learners with and without disabilities, but show us the concrete action steps that give us confidence that we can make that work. We've responded to that feedback and thought about it relative to the drafting of these materials. On page one of the document, it outlines, maybe it's page two, I apologize, the, the robust engagement processes that we need to do with different groups. We need to ensure, obviously, that we are talking to the EL Task Force to D-LAC, that we're also talking to the Department of Justice and other groups to get feedback from this. That feedback process, that feedback loop will sort of continuously improve the work so that when we bring this forward as a policy document ultimately on the October twelfth school committee, it not only will begin with the foundation from, from the thinking and beliefs and values of the English Learner Task Force, but the document will continue to improve and be refined based on their, their, their expectations, and that we have several months now then to bring forward a document that reflects what we want to be true for our multilingual learners with and without disabilities. So then when the school committee votes on this as a policy document in October, we'll all feel really confident that we have a community agreed upon document that will improve outcomes and opportunities for our multilingual learners. I think that is going to be true relative to strategic planning that we will do for students with disabilities, which is on a slightly longer timeline, in part because we will be doing this work in collaboration with our partners on, on an audit of the current programming for our students and the current function of the Special Education Office as part of that work that will help inform the way that we think about the strategic priorities for students with disabilities and our multilingual learners with disabilities. We're aware that we need to think about the intersection of these issues, and those issues will be at the core of both strategic plans, and members of, of the OSCE team are central to the, to the strategic planning for our multilingual learner plan as multilingual learner members will be active and at the core of what we do for our plans relative to students with disabilities. I don't know if that answers your question, but I, I hope it provides some signal about the roadmap ahead. It is true that the August fifteen deadlines, many of these things were, were related to technical aspects of things, procure a contract, get students in place. We also, I think, to a point that I made earlier in this presentation, I just want to acknowledge these are the things that we were acutely aware of that we needed to do to transform our system. So we've been working on these things in collaboration with many of our external partners over, over, at least minimally over the last year, if not longer.
Madam Chair, may I make several more points, please?
Yes.
Great, thanks. I particularly sense with several of our members how I can, I can have a bit more time. Thanks.
Liberties, yeah.
So thank you, Mr. Eccleston. I do want to encourage you to think as broadly as possible about how you gain input and feedback, particularly to proposed policies beyond the school committee. So, for example, you've been talking about English language learners. It's not just the task force, right? So work with sped pack about getting reaction to the part about our students with disabilities who are English language learners as well, multiple sources that you can reach out to, not only inform and make a better policy, but they also help with the buy-in aspects of we're all working on this together and with DESI as well. So I encourage you to try to think for each of the major areas where you have to go out and get feedback, think about how you can get a first level, a primary, a secondary, a tertiary level of feedback as well, maybe from some folks that you wouldn't necessarily think of. For example, on the student safety one, also getting feedback from the COCA, you know, the Code of Conduct Advice Regroup, because a lot of what they're doing impacts student safety as an example. So, so one point is try to go as deeply as you can on feedback. The second is, how is DESI doing? They have several commitments as well to make by August fifteenth. Do we have a sense of how they are doing on their commitments, or will they be reporting that back to us on whether they hit their milestones?
Yeah, it's a great question. DESI has two commitments for August fifteenth. The first is related to the selection of a data auditor. I can confirm for the community that DESI has published, I believe, an RFP for a vendor or an individual to serve as the data auditor. Those, uh, those bids or those applications, so those RFPs were due, and they are in the process, as I understand it, of selecting a vendor. We are meeting, the Chair and I and others are meeting with the city representatives and DESI representatives, including the deputy commissioner at minimum once a month. Our next meeting is on Thursday. One of those agenda items is to get an update on where we are relative to the selection of a data auditor. So I should have more information on that. The second, the second commitment that DESI has made relative to August fifteenth is to lead professional development relative to the problem resolution system, the PRA system. This is a complaint that might come into DESI, and then BPS has obligation and responsibility to comply and to respond to that complaint. In conversations with DESI leaders, it, our deadline, there's sort of a mismatch of dates here, right? So our deadline to hire those positions is September eighth. And so we've agreed, both parties have agreed, and I believe DESI will be sending us a letter to, to codify this expectation that we will start those PDs once those individuals are hired, and they've had a week or two to get acclimated to BPS. Those interview processes have started. We're certainly well on our way to select those individuals on or before September eighth. And once they are selected and have started, our job is to notify DESI, and they, they'll be working with us to talk about that PD. Sorry, not to talk about, to deliver that PD. I will also add that we have had multiple conversations about what the arc of that learning needs to be. Today, we met with the, the senior leader of the PRS system at DESI, and he is aware and his, that his team will be providing that support. He has identified himself as the person who will be providing that professional learning. And so all that is to say that things are underway, but we've mutually agreed upon that we will extend that a few weeks out so that we actually have the people on the ground who are going to be leading that work.
Thank you. So you mentioned the problem resolution. I want to address that for a minute. I, I believe it was the mayor at her comments earlier, where she said, you know, this DESI agreement is kind of the minimum bar. You know, it is not, it's not the high threshold we're aiming for, but it's, it's stuff that we want to do, but we want to do more than that. I, I believe, was it the mayor who made that comment earlier?
That's correct.
Okay, so problem resolution is one example. You may recall that the school committee, as part of working on a strategic plan, talked specifically, we included the words about a customer service mentality. And to me, problem resolution is a minimum. It's like improving ways that parents and, and others can communicate with us about issues and get them resolved. But that is, is symptomatic of, or a piece of a tactic that is within an overall strategy of adopting more of a customer service mentality for the district, where not only our parents and community members and students feel that we are listening, that the students are our customers, the families are our customers, but also to folks in the bowling building, that the schools are also their customers and the school leaders. And getting across a mentality that they are there in service to our schools and that they are an ally to solve problems and help improve the operational effectiveness of our schools. And so I want to make sure that we're not just thinking of problem resolution as a requirement to the DESI agreement, but in fact, it's one that is a piece of something that ties to a core tenet we specifically, the school committee specifically added in to the strategic plan about working towards a customer service mentality. And we can point to other districts such as Austin, Texas, and others that have really taken that approach, and they measure against it. So they do annual surveys or, you know, we are all, let's face it, who of us has not gone into a store recently and get an email afterwards of, how did we do? You know, promoter score, would you refer us to a friend, that type of thing? Did we solve your problem? We all get inundated with this, right? There were districts that are doing this now because feedback is important. And so I just, I just wanted to talk for a minute, Superintendent Eccleston, about the problem resolution as a piece of improving how we view our responsibility for customer service to our families and to our schools.
Yeah, if I could just make a, a few comments on that. First, I just want to say that I just fully agree with everything you just said, and to sort of walk through some of my own logic and thinking about this really important commentary. Also, to begin with, sort of commenting on the mayor's remarks, which is, I fully agree with her as well, that this in some ways is a, is a low bar. When you look at these materials in terms of many of the commitments, many of them are just technical things that, you know, BPS is actually with all the smart people who work here is really primed well to be able to deliver on those things. But what you're, what you're elevating here, which I think is really important, is to, to underscore the point that the mayor is making, which is that things like the PRS is about being reactive to a set of complaints that should have not, never gotten to that level that BPS has not been able to resolve, and so that it continues. I apologize, I know I'm speaking too fast, so I'll slow down. That complaints get to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that really should be resolved at a local level, and there haven't historically been systems and structures to be able to do that. So for me personally, when I say that BPS needs to do business differently, it's the adaptive change that you're talking about that I think is really the complex work before us. BPS can easily meet the commitments outlined in the Systemic Improvement Plan. But BPS must fundamentally change the way that it does business so that we are being proactive and collaborative with our community to respond to these things. In fact, we had this very conversation today with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education as we met with the Problem Resolution System team to talk about PRS. They were very thrilled to see that not only did we respond to the system around, the, the, sorry, the commitment around how to solve a PR, the, the, how to respond to our deficiencies relative to the PRS, PRS system. But more importantly, we also communicated before that how we are using a sort of process to ensure that as, as families reach out to us to provide feedback, that we're responding to that feedback in real time in working through those issues with families before they escalate to the PRS system. There's no question, we need stronger systems be able to respond to the problem resolution system complaints that come through DESI. But more importantly, we need to fundamentally change our system so that we are proactive in working with our families. And that's the complicated work, I think, the complex, complicated work before us. I want to thank members of the Family and Community Advancement Team who began to think about ways that we can measure the number of pieces of feedback that we're receiving through hotlines. And we've been far more systematic and sort of data-driven in those discussions over the last few weeks as we're piloting new systems and developing processes such as escalation, escalation decision trees so that we can partner families with the right person at the right time who can work with them to solve issues as they emerge, rather than allowing them to, to fester and to continue to bubble up at the DESI level, which in many cases is, is unnecessary. So I don't know if I fully answered your question, but I just want to acknowledge that the work that we have ahead of us is to transform the practices so that we are responding to the real adaptive concerns that are before us around doing work differently so that we are not being reactive to our community as we have been in the past.
Great. Thank you. You did. Madam Chair, I have two more, one more question and one more comment, if that's okay. So the first is on, the question is on transportation, and I know Mr. Cardad Hernandez kind of alluded to this in the, in the, in his question during the superintendent's report, but obviously with what's going on, you know, one of the commitments that was just laid out to us was about on-time transportation. Obviously, the news about the Orange Line and work on the Green Line, or parts of the Green Line as well, I think the E-line of the Green Line is going to have an impact to us when school starts. And there's still a tremendous amount of uncertainty about the shuttle buses that the MBTA is proposing. With so many of our high school students on the Orange Line, you know, it's such a critical line for us. The impact on traffic, which is going to affect our buses sitting in traffic when school returns, as, as it affects all of us sitting in traffic, is horrendous today driving through the city. So how, how, if you could enlighten me, please, about the conversations with DESI in light of the Orange Line announcement in particular, and when you think of the ripple effect for our teachers, our employees, not just for our students and families?
Yeah, thank you for that question. Let me, let me first say that my, my bigger priority before having continued conversations with DESI on this matter is to ensure that we have a plan to ensure the, the safe and reliable transportation of our students given the stoppage relative to the Orange Line. And so there's no question, we also need to engage DESI on this topic. We have started that process. But our main commitment has been to the real challenge before us, particularly as it relates to impact for our students and for our families. While I was on vacation last week, Superintendent Skipper has engaged the commissioner on at least two occasions relative to this question. They understand They understand uh, in real time the challenges that this poses to B P S. And I'm confident that we will engage in further discussion with DESI in the weeks to come. I think what's most important is that we fully understand um, the nature of the problem. We've had about a week to sort of sit with it. Um, obviously, we're doing our own data analysis and uh, trying to best prepare. Um, and we will engage with them uh, with really specific and clear plans. And not only will we share with DESI, but even more importantly, share with our community and our families um, as we get feedback around how best to respond to this. Um, so those conversations will be forthcoming. They will be critical um, to our work relative to this is, the systemic improvement plan um, in the weeks to come. But our real priority is to making sure that we deliver for our students and families in this.
Great, thank you. And my last is just a comment. I noticed you plan upon engage with the council of great city schools for three different strategic support uh, team reports. So you had them on transportation, I think student safety and what's third, E L L, students with disabilities?
Um, this, uh, student safety, um, transportation and students with disabilities.
Okay, so, and just for more of the general public's information, what the council does when they're engaged on this is they bring in experts from across the country who are either currently in that position as, say, on the transportation, they're either a transportation chief now of another district or, you know, a recently retired one. So they bring in people who are actually practice experts and they come and visit for you laid out, uh, Mr. Monias in the presentation about that some may be two days, some may be three days. So they're different groups based upon the specialties. But I do want to warn you, Superintendent, I believe you have some experience with this, but the council reports tend to be extremely hard-hitting. And they're filled with a lot of recommendations. So this is not like a consulting firm that may say, here's the three to five things that you need to do. You're gonna get a list of twenty-five, thirty, forty, it could be, because what the council tends to do is when they have all these experts, they all want to have their piece into the report. And they're all going to be making recommendations, right? It's like asking a school committee member about an opinion about something. I'm gonna have an opinion, right? So the experts they bring in, they're gonna have an opinion and you are gonna get a long, hard-hitting report. I want to encourage you to plan a process where you review that with your appropriate teams and you address every single recommendation, even if the way you address it is to say, this is one we're gonna immediately implement. This is one we're gonna implement within six months. These are ones we're gonna study further. And these are ones we have decided not, that doesn't make sense for us. And you should put together a spreadsheet and you could, should present every prior council report that they have done for Boston is posted on our website, on the school committee website, because it is a public document, we make it public. And in the past, it is most effective when the superintendent and the team presents on here are all the recommendations and here is our response. It's almost like the management response to a letter from, a letter from the audit firm. Um, that is then typically posted. I, I just encourage you to do that as a matter of practice. It's gonna be a lot of work for you because you're engaging them for three different reports. You're gonna be seeing a lot of recommendations. But it's, uh, uh, I would encourage you to think about that, not just, you know, presenting the report to say, okay, we got it and, and we did five things. Because inevitably, you're gonna hear back, why didn't you follow that recommendation?
Yeah, I just want to acknowledge, um, one, that's a, a really great piece of feedback. We certainly, having um, partnered with the council before and read many of their reports for Boston, other school districts, um, we are um, undoubtedly expecting exactly what you described. And um, so we're, we're anticipating that. I think you offer us um, an instructive suggestion about sort of how to manage that process and we will certainly um, follow through on that. What I think, what I want to, what I just want to say about the system that Monica Hogan and her colleagues have implemented that I think is really important here is that we've recognized that these issues are not siloed issues relative to one department. And I think that's the mistake that B P S has potentially made in the past. If it was an audit relative to transportation or special education, we assumed it was an issue relative solely to the office, special education or transportation respectfully. What I think we recognize now at this specific moment is that these are cross-functional issues and each one of these issues require people from across the organization to come through, uh, to come together, um, to not only analyze each one of these recommendations, but to um, but to be able to clearly and explicitly, as you state, communicate when these uh, different aspects will be implemented and addressed.
And there, and there will be some that you're gonna say, these don't make sense for us, or they need further study, or there are more appropriate six months or a year down the line because this needs to be fixed before that can be done, et cetera. It's just making sure to go through them all so that you have an answer that you have, you know, have the seriousness of purpose for what the council has brought to the table as well.
Uh, I, I admit that's totally right. And, and I think we're gonna have to evaluate all of those things. What, what I, what I'm confident in is that we've set in a system though, that doesn't put the, these issues on the backs of a single department, but in, but instead puts this on the back of an entire B P S team, both internal and external, who must collectively do this work to respond to the areas in which B P S must improve um, to respond to the real needs of our students and families.
Perfect, thank you. And thank you, Madam Chair, for indulging the extra time for me this evening.
No problem, thank you. Um, I just wanted to step back for a moment. I know that um, Delavern had put her camera on and so did not know whether she wanted to make some comments, but I publicly want to thank her the incredible work that she has been doing um, up to this moment before we got the um, orange line surprise um, to get our buses running on time, um, and, you know, fixing routes, et cetera. So I publicly want to say thank you for your incredible hard work and just wanted to give you a moment to give us any update or thoughts you have.
Uh, thanks Chair. I think Drew covered it all, um, on transportation, both on the orange line shutdown and the DESI piece. Um, so I didn't have anything additional to add at the moment. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. So I only have one final question. Um, you know, given all the work that's being done today, my question really is is there any aspect of this work moving forward that you're the most concerned about?
I, I, I think there are two things at the moment that um, that keep me up at night. Um, the first is that we have significant work ahead of us um, to respond um, to the challenges before us relative to the orange line. I appreciate um, the really important questions and the need for more information. And we are eager to get that and to partner with the city and this, and the state um, to ensure we can offer better detail in the days and weeks to come on this matter. Um, certainly, this is an area of risk for us and we have to ensure uh, the safe, on-time and reliable transportation that our students deserve. Um, and this is a really late, uh, you know, as they say, a sort of October surprise. Were this an election? So we're gonna have to figure out how to respond to this um, collectively. Um, the other thing that I just want to consistently remember is to just underscore a point that I've made a few times and, and Mr. O'Neil helped sort of drive as well, is that um, we can't fall into our old patterns of the way that B P S has done business. Our old patterns are to continue to go into silos, um, to work independently, to box others out of our own individual work. We have learned that that process will not work. We have to do a better job um, figuring out how to work cross-functionally, make our work more transparent. Um, solicit and accept feedback across the minutes and both internally and externally as we're moving forward. And we fundamentally have to do a better job of ensuring that one of the main drivers and purposes of a central office is to ensure that our schools and our school leaders, um, and our educators at the schoolhouse get the support that they need and deserve. I know that this is a sort of key operating principle for incoming Superintendent Skipper. It's also a shared belief that I have. And so we are working with a, a group of um, cross-functional folks here in the B P S to design a regional support structure so that supports are embedded within the regions, within the regions across B P S. And those are regions to the maximum extent possible are based on geography and neighborhoods. We know that the neighborhoods of Boston have really unique and customized needs. And I want to ensure that we are developing systems and structures of support as we move forward. The third issue that is um, of utmost importance to me, particularly as we think about developing systems of support um, both at the central office, but most particularly at the schoolhouse. We also have to get honest that as an organization, we have not held ourselves to equal units of accountability. That day must change and must end as we move forward. We must be accountable to our public to improved academic outcomes and opportunities. And we have to increase both levels of support and accountability and those two, those two things must sort of be in concert with each other. A system that is built solely on support with no, with no accountability doesn't get outcomes, nor does a system that's built fully on accountability without support. Um, and so I know that this is something that's really important for Superintendent Skipper, but that's an organizational shift that we're going to need to make if we're gonna get serious about achieving a spirit of the systemic improvement plan, which requires us to do work differently across the Boston Public Schools.
Okay, thank you. Um, looking forward to hearing DESI's response to the August fifteenth deadline and then looking forward to more in-depth work as we move forward into the implementation process. So with that, I just want to thank everyone. Um, the committee looks forward to receiving regular updates on these critical topics throughout the school year. Uh, that concludes our business this evening. The next remote school committee meeting will take place on Wednesday, August thirty-first at five P M, at which time the committee will receive an update on the district's reopening plans for the new school year. Having already adjourned, we will close out the session. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you to the team for presenting tonight and thank you for the work that you're doing on the DESI agreement and the opening of school and dealing with the orange line.
Thank, thank you all. We appreciate your support.
Very, very much appreciate the work doing for our families and students.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.